Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as customary, we're going to have a moment of silence. And in your thoughts, keep in mind James H. Fox, Lieutenant Fox, who is a member of our women's police department. He has passed away, so please keep him, his family in your thoughts. Thank you. Okay, and before I, I want to mention that this meeting is being televised by and recorded by our television WHCA TV, so just want to let you know that. And before I pass the gavel on to our town administrator to reorganize, I'd like to welcome Laura Howell to our board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to say also thank Randy Lamatina for all the work that he's done in the past working for the town, is on the Board of Selectmen and other boards and committees that he sat on. And I want to thank him for his time. That being said, I'll pass the gavel to our administrator and we'll start the appointment for Chair.
Okay, thank you. I would like to call for a reorganization of the board, and I'd like to open the floor to nominations for the position of Chairman.
I will motion Kyle Kowalski as Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any other nominations for Chair?
I'll make a nomination for Justin.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, then this will be a roll call vote, so I'd like to call for a vote in connection with the motions on the floor. I will need a roll call vote, so each member will need to state the name of the person they're voting for. Dan Salvucci?
Kyle Kowalski.
Sean?
Justin Evans.
Pearl?
I'll vote for myself.
Justin?
I'll vote for myself.
And Laura?
Kyle.
Okay, that's three votes for Kyle, two for Justin.
So do I get to be Chair?
You get to be Chair. And I'm going to be asked to scabble. Congratulations, over to you.
And here you go, Kyle. Excuse me. Really? Okay, I'd like to, yeah, Madeline?
It's because cable has no sound.
Cable has no sound.
No volume?
Paul?
You folks will be sharing that, right?
Madeline.
I'm making a call.
Put on pride, everybody, we're about in five minutes.
Well, we should probably go with outside.
Why not?
Yeah, we can have some lip readers someplace. What I'd like to do is to ask for nominations for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Dan?
You nominate Dan?
Yes, please.
I'll second that. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Saying, no, we should just sort of, well, you're not doing this anymore. We should sort of voice vote. Sean?
No.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Four to one, Vice Chair, Mr. Salvucci. And now the final position is Clerk. Are there any nominations for Clerk?
Justin.
Second, that Justin's been moved and seconded. Anyone else?
Just not sure.
Okay, it's going to be unanimous, but it's a little heavy.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. We have, we have officers now.
Could someone tell Paul that Ryan Tully's trying to call him?
Okay, Ryan's trying to call. Okay. Let me see if I can get him.
Oh.
I couldn't hear. For Vice Chair.
Laura motion made, Kyle second, and it was? Four to one. Four to one. And you got the Clerk?
I did.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Where are we? I'd like a motion to approve fill-in payroll warrants. Still moved?
Second.
Or second. Okay, all those, all those in favor? All right.
Hello.
Oh, extension, sorry. Please excuse me.
And a motion to accept correspondence in the read file. Still moved?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Public forum, if there's anyone here who wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. If it's, if it's anything that's going to suggest any action, it'll be taken up at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Don Byers, 20 Russell Road. I want to congratulate you, Chair Kowalski, on your reelection and your election. Laura, congratulations. I come before you as a resident and taxpayer while also knowing I wear the hat of being an elected school committee member. I have some follow-up questions regarding Article 42 from the May 1st town meeting. I realize this is public comment, so I do not expect you to respond this evening to the questions I'm going to raise. However, I do hope as you proceed with setting the tax levy over the next several months, you will perhaps be able to address this in a future public meeting. So Article 42 in the booklet on page 16, I'll just repeat it, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available free cash, said funds to be used to reduce the amount of money to be raised by taxation for fiscal year 2024, or take any other action relative thereto." So I come before you wondering if you can describe what is being done with Article 42 as it was approved and why the Board of Selectmen proposed this article. I did attend town meeting. It did start at 7:30 PM and lasted a good three and a half hours. We were all there until 11:00 PM. This Article 42 was the second-to-last article of a very long night, so while I do agree that it was approved by the voters just prior to 11:00 PM, I think it's an extremely important financial decision made by the town that deserves to be further explained. The Finance Committee actually did not vote on this matter, it's XX in the booklet, because there was no dollar figure at that time. However, an amendment was presented on town meeting floor, inserted the amount of $455,323, which is written on the last page of the booklet. Again, as a taxpayer, my question is what is the purpose of this use of one-time funds from free cash? What was the benefit to the town? And who benefits from reducing the amount of money to be raised by taxation? We do often hear of the term proposition two and a half override, but this feels like the opposite. Is this an under-ride? And is it the board's intention to report it to the Department of Revenue as such when the FY '24 tax levy is set? $455,000 is a significant amount of tax revenue. I do thank you in advance for your follow-through on these questions in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Don, and we will, we will get back to you when we'll be on the agenda in the future.
You can probably answer it now, right?
I could if you'd like me to, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Apparently, we may have, may have some information for you, Don.
That was the amount of money that we needed to balance the budget. So that was, there was a lower amount, and then when the schools came in and we had a compromise, we, you know, juggled some things around from capital and so forth, and that's the amount that we needed from the remaining free cash to just close the budget. And that was, you know, it was discussed all along through the budget process that we would be using funds from free cash to, to close the budget, to, to balance it. So after that was done, there was $53,000 some odd dollars remaining in free cash. That was it.
I, I think what confuses me, or I'd like further clarification, because it does say that those funds to be used to reduce the amount of money to be raised by taxation. So it sounds as though we are not fully taxing to the levy, but instead choosing to use free cash in lieu of fully taxing to the two and a half percent that we're allowed to, or perhaps not recognizing some new growth. I'm not sure, so I'll refrain from any further back and forth because I know it's public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Joe.
John Galvin, 41 High Street. Again, congratulations, Kyle and Laura. I am a member of the Whitman Middle School Building Committee, though I am here talking to myself for myself today. Not to myself, but I do that a lot, too. As we are all probably aware, there is now, the Selectmen's membership on the Whitman Building Committee is vacant. I'm here as a, again, speaking for myself, to strongly urge that the Board of Selectmen, when they decide, and I know I'm speaking, that's not on the agenda tonight, but when you do decide to select a replacement, I would urge you to select Mr. Evans to take that spot. He has a very unique set of skills that would very much benefit the Middle School Building Committee, so I would just hope that you would consider that, and no disrespect to everybody else, but like I said, Justin being an engineer could be a very great member of that committee.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Please, Joe.
You know, we might as well jump something on the agenda. We were going to actually take up that matter under the town administrator's report, which is the last item on the agenda. However, Mary Beth and I had a conversation today about the, apparently at the, at that meeting, Justin, you were a, not a participant, but a watcher at that meeting.
Attendance.
There was, the intent was published that they probably don't need a Selectman on that committee, that we don't need a replacement for, to replace Randy on that committee. But Mary Beth and I had a conversation, and I think it's, it's imperative to replace Randy on that committee, and I was going to suggest at that time that the board send Justin's name as a replacement. So that's, that was going to happen later on, but you, you gave it some force. That was good. So at this time, if the, I'd like to take a motion to have Justin replace Randy on the committee. I will make that motion. Thank you very much for doing this. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
None.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Hey, good work, John. You convinced us. Okay, anybody else in public forum? Okay, thank you. Approval of meeting minutes, open session April 4th, 2023. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you went there.
I abstain.
And I, I will abstain because I wasn't there. Open session April 24th, 2023. So moved.
Second.
Is any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
Abstaining. Abstaining.
Very good. Open session May 1st, 2023. Is there a move?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Abstaining.
Very good. Excellent, we got through that. Chairman's report, don't have one. So we'll go to new business. Well, naturally, no, I did want to, I did want to echo what, and I don't like doing this. I, I do not like echoing what somebody else said because they've already said. Yeah, but actually, they didn't hear me because the mics weren't working. That's good. There you go. You're getting credit for it. We should do that, we should do that moron. I want to, I'd like to, I'd like to say something about Randy Lamatina as well. Served with him for a number of years, the last year as a, as a chairperson. It was a very tough year to be a chairperson of this board because of some of the things that were going on, and I think he did a fine job, and I just want to give him some accolades for that, echoing what was not heard on TV before when Randy was speaking. I'd also like to welcome my second favorite animal control officer to the, to the board, and she knows who my favorite animal control officer was. There was a man by the name of Bob Hammond, who was an animal control officer here years ago, and when I first moved to Whitman, after a couple, well, no, it was five years after I moved to Whitman, I was living in the house I'm living in now, and there were some holes in the side yard, and we called Animal Control. Bob shows up, those of you who know Bob will understand this, he shows up, he stuck his head down the hole. There were a bunch of feathers around the hole, that's what concerned me. He came in, stuck his head down the hole, comes up and says, "You got gophers." Now, that's my kind of animal control officer. But Laura has been a terrific animal control officer, too, and still is, and I wanted to acknowledge that in all community.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to act on, okay, next item on the agenda, if I can find it there in my glasses. Act on the request of Edwar Gergis?
Yes, sir.
Gergis?
Gergis, yes.
Gergis. To change the name of the business on the livery license and livery driver's certificate of Edwar's transportation to Faro Limo, to Faro Limo Services. If approved, act to rescind the livery license and livery driver's certificate of Edwar's transportation on the premises located at 15 Hilltop Road. Zero motion. So moved.
Second.
Second. Are there any, any questions? Call those in favor. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for being patient for us to get there. Act on the request?
Can we go?
You may go.
My kids in the hole.
God bless. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Act on the request of the Whitman Housing Authority, reappoint Michelle Frazier, town-appointed resident member, to the Whitman Housing Authority for a five-year term effective July 20th, 2023 through July 20th, 2028. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Act on the recommendation of the Council on Aging, to nominate Mary Holland to serve as the town's representative on the Board of Directors for all Colony Elder Services for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act to appoint John L. Canizo Jr. to the position of Auxiliary Administrator effective May 23rd, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and as a result of this action, Mr. Canizo's appointment to the position of Auxiliary Special Police Officer will terminate effective end of business on May 23rd, 2023. Chief, if you want to speak to this, please.
Good evening, Board of Selectmen. So this is a change of status, and the way police reform works, as I think the majority of you are well aware, in order for someone to remain a sworn police officer, they have to comply with everything that post-orders, and so this is a change in status for John Canizo from a sworn police position to more of an administrator. So it's a change in title, but it's not really a change in job duties. The only thing that would be missing is he does not have police powers, so he would administer the auxiliaries. So what he does now is he schedules them, schedules monthly meetings. If there's a parade like the one coming up on Monday, he puts everyone in position. He gets them training. He does a few other things, you know, around the town for recalls of, you know, police cruiser issues and whatnot, so he's on top of a lot of things for us.
Okay.
And it's an administrative position at this point, as opposed to being out in the street and actually doing any hands-on work.
Thank you. Mary Beth, do you want to add anything?
I believe the union president, Kevin Schaller, has something to say on this.
Sure.
Good evening, Board. I'm here on behalf of the union of the police department. My name's Kevin Schaller, president of the union. I would like to request the board to table the discussion on this matter, as I would like to have further discussions as it pertains to a different union member.
Someone like to make a motion to table? Yeah, I'm going to make that motion to table this until. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just take a vote. Doesn't have to, doesn't have to be a roll call vote. All those in favor of tabling it? And will, Chief, will this matter get cleared up before the next meeting? Will there be enough discussion to deal with?
Yeah, I'm, I'm optimistic.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I don't want to put it off forever.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Act to reappoint Daniel Salvucci to the, to the position of Delegate Plymouth County Advisory Board through June 30th, 2024.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second my own. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Act to reappoint Justin Evans to the position of alternate, alternate delegate Plymouth County Advisory Board through June 30th, 2024. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Act to declare approximately 2,375 used water meters as surplus material and to dispose of said surplus material by public auction or by other disposable means if there is no value. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Act on the request of Tina Moniz and his Desiree Mills, Milnes, or Mills, to hold a block party on Sunday, August 27th, 2023, between the hours of 11:00 AM and 3:00 PM, with Fox Hill Run being blocked off of traffic between Shelley Lane and Hunter's Path. Zero motion. So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay, yes, Dan. Chief, are you okay with this, please? And also, the fire department, the fire is being able to get equipment down there in case of an incident. I know that you have, they block it off by using movable objects.
Yeah, they've complied with everything along the way. They've done this, I'm not sure how many years, but a number of years now, and we haven't had any issues, so.
Okay, I know. I just want to make sure people understand safety, we're looking at the safety issue of it.
Same thing in all previous years, they've met our requirements that we've had, and we've had no problems accessing the area.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, anything else? All those in favor? Act on the request of Commander Walter Randolph of the Whitman Chapter of Disabled American Veterans to conduct its annual Forget Me Not Drive at Stop &amp; Shop on June 16, 17, and 18, 2023, and July 15 and 16, 2023, or any alternate dates suggested by Stop &amp; Shop depending upon availability of time and space. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Vote to ratify the holiday, the next two we're going to ask to pass over, the vote to ratify the holiday MOA between the Town of Whitman and Whitman Firefighters Association, and the vote to authorize the Chair to sign the CBA between Town of Whitman and the Whitman Firefighters Association, because we have not at this time had any signatures from the fire, from the fire. Do you need a motion to pass over both? So I need, so I need a motion to pass over both of them.
That's correct. I request that we pass over. I have reached out, and I believe that the union, the fire union, was going to ratify the MOA yesterday. I reached out today, just haven't heard back yet, so I'm sure this is something we can just do at the next meeting.
So a motion to pass over both?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Call for a civil service list. It's bouncing up and down, aren't you, Chief?
It's okay. Get my steps in. As you know, we're down a number, number of officers. In addition to that, we're going to have a couple more who have decided to retire in the near future, so we're looking to start the process, which is going to be a little bit more lengthy than it was in the past. In the past, we've done, we had the opportunity to reserve officers and then see how they fit in on more or less a part-time basis to go through the part-time academy. There is no more part-time police academy, so we have exhausted our reserve list. Two of them started the academy on Monday, and they made it through the first two days, so we're hopeful that they continue and fully graduate. In the meantime, we're going to need to fill those vacancies and start with a new civil service list, and so that's why the request now.
I'll make that motion. Second. I'll make that motion. Second. Any discussion? Yeah, I have a question. Are we, is it, by bringing in, I don't know how many police officers you're looking to get in, but is that going to also have promotions within the ranks coming up soon?
Well, it's, it's going to depend on what ranks retire, so the majority of them, based on their leave status, are officers, and there is one, one of rank, so.
Okay. I'll have you promote with him. Thank you. Okay, so no further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Vote to accept the remaining work for Peyton Place in accordance with the planning board's approval process. So moved.
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Yeah, I don't, what is this?
Okay, so the requirements of the DPW have been met for Peyton Place, and the street was accepted. The planning board is in the process of just finalizing their requirements, so just having this vote just allows the process to follow through the way it normally would for the planning board.
Right, okay.
Is this one of the streets accepted at town meeting a few weeks ago?
I was going to ask that for the next question, yeah. Okay, anything else? All those in favor? Soulflower Incorporated, amended host community agreement. Mary Beth?
Yes, so this is the first amendment to the Soulflower Incorporated Host Community Agreement, and basically, they are splitting up Soulflower into multiple corporations for business purposes, but the HCA restricts their ability to do so and said, so they need this amendment. It should not change their operations as approved by the Board of Selectmen under the host community agreement. So they're splitting up Soulflower Incorporated into, it would be the initial HCA recipient was Soulflower Incorporated, and the retailer will be Chill and Bliss LLC. These are, this is a Massachusetts LLC. The product manufacturer is Fusion Drop LLC, a Massachusetts LLC. Cultivator is Crafted Cannabis LLC, a Mass LLC, and the existing licensee transporter is Soulflower Express LLC, also a Mass LLC. This has gone to our council, and basically, it's, you know, not much of a change at all, just the names, splitting it up so that they can do what they need to.
Okay, any, any questions? All those in favor then? Okay, the next item has to do with flag displays and painted crosswalks. Maybe you can introduce it, Mary Beth, and I have some thoughts on it, too.
Okay, certainly. So we have had a couple of, well, we've had a comment and we've had a request on flag display and painted crosswalks. So for the painted crosswalks, it's actually Kathleen Evans had reached out and spoken to the library about painting for the Pride Month, a walkway at the library, on the side entrance of the library, and that there's a second spot at the front. So it's something that, you know, has not been requested before, and I just think that, well, that maybe it should go for bylaw or.
Okay, I spoke to town council today about this, too. It appears to me that displaying a flag, no matter what, no matter what flag it is, and to paint a crosswalks, no matter what kind of designation it is, this has nothing to do with what is planned to be painted or what is planned, what is planned or has been hung already, that if we, if we were to, it needs to, it would mean that in the future we would have to approve everything. So it's been suggested, anything, could KKK, the, the choir boys. The choir boys, whatever those guys were called. The Proud Boys, yes. And so I thought we should be cautious on it. And I talked to council, and she, her opinion is that since we don't have any bylaws that give us a process to either approve or disapprove a request like this, we need to have one first to protect the town and also to protect the people that want to do this. So I'm going to suggest that we pass this on to our bylaws committee, who would have council's assistance in going through what needs to be done so that we don't get into issues. Yes?
You did send a couple of documents for us to review today. That wasn't the message, and it would be helpful to have some guidance from council here, because the message, I, I mean, just as a layperson reading these documents, I thought it said, if you don't explicitly have a bylaw which states how the, I think they separated, like free speech first, governmental speech. So unless you explicitly have a bylaw which says, this is how we fly flags and that kind of stuff, then you can't really restrict, because if you restrict one, then you should be restricting others, or there was some ambiguity about it. So it's, unless you, if you had a bylaw, then that would provide the government speech. Otherwise, it's considered free speech. That's kind of how I read the documents that were forwarded today. I feel like it's a cool initiative. I think it's cool for Pride Month. I'd like to support it, but obviously, I don't want to go against what's recommended by council. Is there a way to expedite? When is the event going to be held?
However, I was also advised by council, Kathy, because you're related to this guy here, Justin, that he has to leave the room.
Oh, sure.
If we're discussing this.
And so...
And I didn't, I wasn't aware we were going to be discussing it. I thought we were going to be passing it on to the bylaws committee. But if we're actually discussing it with your intention to maybe do something, then Justin has to leave.
I'm not comfortable with Justin having to leave. Is the council...
I'm sorry, but Justin's going to have to leave if we discuss it.
It was a recommendation from council that he should remove himself?
Yes, 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 remove himself from the room.
Conflict of interest law?
She said he has to remove himself from the room because he could affect, just by being here, and he's an imposing figure. Just by being here, he could affect what goes on in the room. That's my advice from Michelle McMillan. However, it depends, Kathy. If we're talking about, and Sean, if we're talking about making a decision about doing it, then yeah, he does have to leave. If we're just trying to figure out whether or not it can go to the bylaws committee in a timely fashion, et cetera, then it's something different, I think. Because then we're not discussing the matter.
Sure. If we have the opportunity to discuss it, I would love to. And then if it ends up that we move it on to the bylaw committee, that's fine as well. But it would be great to be able to talk about it.
Okay, then you can talk about it without him?
Yeah, sure can.
We have permission, we have permission for you to leave.
You got a cup of coffee?
So Kathleen Evans...
Great greens. I'm not trying to make this difficult for you.
No, it's fine. Yeah, so a group of us, starting last year, kind of got together, and this has been done in other communities. We thought it would be a really cool initiative in the town. We did some research online, and it seems like it would be really feasible. The library expressed interest in doing it. And I think that inclusivity is important, and this would be a really cool way to get people involved in a project that would last, right? And we have a lot of kids that go, we have a lot of community members that go to the library, and it would be a really cool idea. I don't know, I know you wanted to kind of speak more to the feasibility of it, but...
Thank you for explaining it, but you're right.
Yes, of course.
I totally agree with you. That'd be a great thing to do. Just going to make sure we don't open the path for people who aren't as interested in sensitivity to other people.
Sure. Is it, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not sure what the process is, but is it typically that somebody would come forward, ask for permission, and then you would either grant it or deny it depending on the request?
Well, that's what Sean is asking for. I think we do not have a written process for that. And the council suggested we send it to the bylaws committee to come up with a process or a bylaw that would describe the process.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense.
The trouble is, it's almost June. And so that's the, you know, that's the issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sean?
My question is, if we're not actively regulating this and we're choosing to regulate on this specific issue, that's what worries me. You know what I mean? If we had a bylaw that was in place that explicitly said how we regulate it, and we have been enforcing it, that to me makes sense. But that we don't have one, and I can't remember a time when we had regulated flags type stuff, and now one comes up and we're saying no, that feels funny to me.
But we're not saying no, Sean, if you listen. What we're saying is that we need to have the committee that deals with these things, and the appropriate one is probably the bylaws committee, to deal with it, to come up with a process. We don't have a process.
Maybe to be clear...
We're not saying no. We're saying we need a process to do so.
For me specifically, I would like council to be here so I could ask questions to get more knowledge about this before I recommend it just to go to a bylaw. You know, I don't know if we can do it at the next meeting, if that gives enough time or not.
Well, no, the next meeting is probably going to be in the middle of June.
Ideally, it would be in June, but it is a project that would be lasting, right? It's permanent. And so if we had to push it off, we could definitely do it in a different month. You know what I mean? It's not something that we couldn't do outside of June. It was just ideal because it's Pride Month in June. Yeah.
Okay, okay. How do you, Kathy, how do you feel about giving it to the bylaws committee?
I think if it paves a way for being able to put up pride flags and like display things that will make our town inclusive and welcoming, then I would be for it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Resmin Conley, 405 Franklin. Some of the things you listed, wouldn't they be covered under hate speech? You said KKK and swastika. I would assume that those would be covered under hate speech.
I don't know, they might, but I really think that we need, we need to have something...
A bylaw that says that it has to be agreed upon and inclusive.
I was just using that as an example to...
Okay, good.
You know. Why? Because it came into my head. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Kathy. Anyone else? So what I'm looking for is a motion to send this issue of flag displays and painted crosswalks to the bylaws committee.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Yeah, it doesn't mean that you have to vote yes. Okay, any discussion, any further discussion?
One thing, the bylaw study committee, I assume that they're going to be looking at possibly other towns and what they've done. And, because I know I've seen items where on town or state property, they allow certain flags, such as the American flag, the town flag, the state flag.
POW, NIA.
Yeah, the POW flags and things like that, right? But no, you know, some of the other flags, they don't allow. So it's, I guess they have to look and see what they feel is best, so.
Just as some background as well, there are a lot of towns in the area that have allowed schools to put these up. So I believe Hingham was one of the ones recently, but there are schools that have painted crosswalks on town property, which is one of the reasons the library was interested. And it also, it wouldn't be an actual crosswalk, so there wouldn't be any issues of safety that came up, even though eventually a real crosswalk would be really cool as well. But it is something that's been done in the area.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay. It's been a motion to refer to the bylaws committee, and we have to make sure that council physically assists the bylaws committee when they need.
Sure.
Yes?
I would just ask that we make this decision at the next meeting, and that council can be here before we make the decision.
What, the decision to send it to bylaws committee? You want to put off that decision?
Because really, for me, I feel like the decision to put it off the bylaws, I appreciate that's going to be thorough, but I think in many ways, we should probably put it to bylaws anyway.
That is the advice that council gave us. You understand, you understand that?
It's the advice that council gave you on the phone when I was involved in the conversation. I'd like to have the council here so I can ask them the right questions, because for me, this is, this just feels funny. We're restricting something that, for me, we haven't restricted before, not to my knowledge. And for the reasons that you give, that what if anybody is going to fly, asked to fly some sort of ridiculous flag? I don't, that doesn't feel relevant to me. And I'd like to ask some questions from council personally.
May I ask you, Sean, are you concerned about freedom of speech being infringed upon, or is it different?
Honestly, I just, I want to do things right, and I want to be thorough. So I appreciate the move to bring it to the bylaws committee. But I also don't want to slow down an event that seems like it's going to be a positive event, could be really pro-social for the community. So it could be that if we do some research in between now and next month, and, you know, all of us are thinking about it, then we get here at the next meeting, maybe we can do both. So, that's all.
It was good she didn't mind if she prolonged it maybe a week or two. That might be helpful.
Well, our next meeting, when did you plan to have the meeting in June? 20th of June? 20th of June?
We were just having one, I believe, the 20th.
20th of June. The next meeting is the 20th of June. Okay.
That hasn't been set yet, I think, by the board.
It's going to be set pretty soon. Okay, 20th of June. Well... We have, well, we have a motion on the floor to send it to the bylaws committee with the help of council. And we have Sean's refusal to accept my word that the council put it that way. He would rather listen in the conversation himself. So we can vote on that motion, or we can ask council to come on the 20th of June.
Well, I think, if I may, Sean, can you put your questions in writing? If you give them to Mary Beth, that way council, if it's something that she needs to look up, she will have the answers for you. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, for her to, I mean, it would be senseless for her to be here or whoever they, they comes here for our town council, and you ask a question, and they say, well, I have to go back and research that. Then we have made no progress. But if you had the specific questions that you were wondering about, right, and Mary Beth sends it to him, that way he has the answer, they have the answer for you when they walk into the room.
Yeah, yeah, I, again, based on the documents that were spent today, I do have questions, and I think this is an important issue. So I can certainly put together questions, for sure.
It's just something to make the process go quicker. So if they, if it so chooses that they want to do this, it happens, you know? And, you know, and we don't, they don't have to wait a month or two months or three months, you know what I mean? They can, you know, get it done when they want. Just, it's just a thought. You know, you might want to put the questions together and send them to Mary Beth, and she can send them to our town council. Might help, might move the process a little bit quicker for you.
I can do that, for sure. It's just a number of things about this issue that I'm not really comfortable with.
We want you to be comfortable, Sean. Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we vote to send it to the bylaws committee? In the meantime, if, Mary Beth, if you could arrange to have Michelle and Sean talk on the phone?
Oh, yeah.
And see if it can clear up some of the things that PDS.
And I believe...
And if that gets cleared up, then, ahead of time, then it gets cleared up ahead of time, and we can handle everything on the 20th. In the meanwhile, the bylaws committee will have the issue.
Does Justin, can Justin also speak to Michelle?
Pardon?
Can Justin also speak to Michelle directly?
No.
I would...
Well...
Well, are we talking about the crosswalks?
Yeah, on this issue.
I don't know that, we could ask Michelle that. I don't think that...
I don't think so, actually. That's not what, that's not what you said.
I'm sure you say yes and no.
Maybe I can ask her that question.
Right.
Yeah. She was pretty direct about having him leave the discussion. Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the floor to send it to the bylaws committee. And as part of that motion, we'll have Mary Beth set up a conversation between Sean and Michelle. Okay? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, then don't have Michelle call.
Should I? Justin?
What? Yeah, you can get Justin. We'll bring him back in. Were you listening?
No.
Thank you, Justin.
Your wife did a great job.
Okay, that set the June meeting. Mary Beth has suggested June 20th. Is that okay with people?
Hopefully. You won't see me in a suit. I'll be a slant.
That's right. Let me just double check. I think we talked about this already, didn't we? Yeah, June 20th. Next meeting will be June 20th.
Okay.
Okay. All business, Assistant Town Administrator.
Yes, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Monday, May 1st, the board voted to appoint Kathleen Keefe as the new Assistant Town Administrator pending negotiations. On May 15th, an offer letter was approved and sent to Kathleen. She has signed and returned the offer letter. Kathy has been employed by the Town of Whitman for the past 17 years, 15 of which she has been a department head in the role of town assessor. Kathleen has all the qualifications requested. She's extremely knowledgeable and highly professional. Her institutional knowledge will serve as an asset in her capacity as the Assistant Town Administrator. So congratulations to Kathy. Do you, is there any further vote that needs to be done? I mean, it was voted pending negotiations.
Right, I think we have to vote to accept the...
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Accept the terms of the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Congratulations.
Introduce yourself, yeah?
Is that okay?
I have a little something for PDS.
So I guess, I guess...
She's very professional.
So, good evening. Town Administrator Carter and the Honorable Board is with appreciation and great enthusiasm that I accept the appointment to the position of Assistant Town Administrator. For me, and I anticipate for the town, it is an ideal fit.